Good evening, good afternoon. Welcome everyone. My name is Eli Manning and I am one of the social science chairs for the track. Dr. C N Wilson, who's unable to join us tonight, is also the other co-chair for the social sciences. We want to welcome you for this interesting and lively panel tonight that we're really looking forward to. Entitled, what did we call it again? At the intersection of multiple pandemics, colonialism, racism, the overdose crisis, gender-based violence and COVID-19. So I am coming to you from Shabukduk, which is in Mi'kmaq, which is the unceded and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. And I also want to introduce to you my co-panelist, co-moderator for tonight, Dr. Brittany Bingham.
Hi, everyone. Welcome. Really happy to be here. I am calling in from the unceded homelands of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh people. My name is Brittany Bingham. I am from the SeaShelt Nation on the Sunshine Coast of B.C. And I'm the Director of Indigenous Research at the Centre for Gender and Sexual Health Equity. And that's a joint role with Vancouver Coastal Health, Aboriginal Health. Really happy to be here as a co-chair for the Epi Public Health Track. And to help moderate this session with our wonderful speakers today. And I would love to invite everyone, if you have the chance to add to the chat, land acknowledgement of your own. It's really important for us to consider and honour the lands that we're on. For the session today, we're going to go in a circle format with our panelists. And we have several discussion questions that we'll work through and give each panelist a few minutes to give their thoughts on those questions. So I'm going to go in right into the first question. So what are the realities of the communities that you work with and identify with as they face the intersections of these multiple pandemics? What does the research fail to address regarding these realities? And we're going to go straight to Gillian to start us off with the first comments.
Thanks so much, Brittany. So my name is Gillian Cola. And I'm a postdoctoral fellow at the Canadian Institute for Substance Use Research at the University of Victoria. But I live in Toronto on the lands of the Anishinaabe, the Haudenosaunee, the Huron-Wendat and the Mississauga of the New Credit. I'm a white settler in Canada and I'd like to acknowledge that today is the National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls and Two-Spirit People. In the two years since the final report from the National Inquiry into Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls, which highlighted how Canadian institutions have systematically violated the human rights of Indigenous women and girls amounting to genocide. Very little concrete action has been taken to implement the calls to justice outlined in the inquiry's final report. This is our national shame and I highlight this today because it's impossible to talk about the intersection of multiple pandemics without centring how in Canada, we seem to be stuck on acknowledgement, which is a very poor substitute for action. When we have the calls to justice as well as the calls to action from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission available to guide us. So today I'm going to centre my remarks on the overdose crisis, which unfortunately provides another example of how we're stuck at acknowledging the impacts of a horrible crisis without taking concrete and systemic action to address it. Deaths from the opioid overdose have worsened considerably in the past year since the COVID pandemic began. And last week, the Ontario Chief Coroner released devastating statistics showing that 2,426 people have died due to opioid-related causes in 2020 in Ontario alone, which represents a 60% increase compared to 2019. B.C. has seen a 74% increase in opioid overdose deaths in the same time period. Alberta and Saskatchewan are seeing huge increases as well, with Saskatchewan seeing a doubling of overdose deaths in 2020 compared to 2019. Now, the first and maybe only key message that I want to emphasise today as we begin is that while these deaths are fundamentally are due to an unregulated and volatile drug supply, they are fundamentally deaths that are due to failed drug and social policies. And when we're looking at the response, or more accurately, accurately, the lack of response from all levels of government to these staggering numbers, I fear that this drug and social policy crisis is only going to get worse. The Ontario Government has not reacted at all to the 60% increase in deaths that we've seen. They've not mentioned these numbers publicly. There have been no announcements of emergency interventions or funding. There have been no condolences to families. And this is shocking, but it's perhaps not surprising, as in the past month, it feels like we're moving backwards. With the Alberta Government announcing the defunding of a crucial supervised consumption site in Edmonton and the Saskatchewan Government refusing for the second year in a row now to fund Saskatoon Supervised Consumption Site, which is currently operating solely due to community donations and support. The silence and inaction from all levels of government on the overdose crisis and the COVID pandemic and their intersection is not just disrespectful to families and communities. It feels incredibly violent to people on the front lines of the overdose crisis right now. And it's absolutely shocking to me that in the face of these new statistics that confirm what frontline workers have been desperately trying to call attention to since the beginning of the COVID pandemic. And in fact, for years now, this absolute silence and lack of action endures. This is what stigma against people who use drugs looks like in real time. And I'm going to stop now and pass things off to Albert. But I just want to note before I do that, that there's a lot of similarities here to the early years of the HIV crisis, where stigma and discrimination also impeded a robust and coordinated response to the public health crisis that was occurring before our eyes.
Yeah, thank you, Gillian. And I'm Albert MacLeod. I'm a member of the Manitoba HIV STBBI Collective. And it's a group of academics and community-based researchers looking at HIV and STBBIs. I'm involved in a project that is doing research on First Nations living in Northern Manitoba with HIV. And we just began our research project as the pandemic broke last March, where we were supposed to travel up to Thompson or the Manitoba and meet with the First Nations representatives to begin the engagement in this particular type of research. The outset is to identify 20 care providers who provide HIV-specific care, testing two First Nations people around HIV, as well as 40 First Nations people, 20 in the north and 20 at the urban centre, who are living with HIV, with the aim of improving services for them, especially in the north. And with this sort of, you know, increasing pandemic, increasing restrictions, and particularly by midsummer, we were advised not to travel north of 53 into the north to meet, because there were so many unknowns about HIV transmission, or not HIV, COVID-19 transmission. But we had to adjust our model of doing research. Ideally, we would have done in-person interviews. And then we shifted that to doing online Zoom interviews. And just recently learned that the wifi is so unstable in the north that even doing Zoom interviews were not possible. And that we're in a situation of doing telephone interviews. So we've had to adjust our research model quite a bit in response to how the COVID-19 pandemic has affected, you know, regional spaces and then the increasing guidelines and restrictions regarding travel. And but within that, and I know Gillian mentioned, you know, the early HIV pandemic and myself, you know, being in Vancouver in 1979, that's sort of the outset of the North American HIV pandemic. It really comes back to the question is, what did we learn from the HIV pandemic, particularly for Indigenous people? And myself, I'm HIV negative, but I'm a long-term survivor of that era. And have been able to, you know, work with systems, including research, healthcare systems, governmental systems, federal and provincial, in terms of the Indigenous response to HIV. And it just seems like those are two, you know, separate pandemics. But in my belief is that as a long-term survivor, there could have been things, interventions, knowledge that could have prepared us for this particular pandemic, because in the, you know, years in between, we had SARS and H1N1. And I think generally, you know, looking at our pandemic response or infectious disease response, we are not ready. We're certainly not ready to learn new ways of doing things, or particularly to do things from an Indigenous perspective or an Indigenous lens. And with our project, we've introduced some awareness building around what we constitute ethical space in research, which is what conversations do we need to have about equity and doing community-based research such as around living with HIV and First Nations people? And we've used some of the work from Elder Willie Ermine from the University of Saskatchewan, as well as Dr. Reg Chrusru from the University of Alberta, as sort of, you know, the guiding philosophies around Indigenous ideas around ethical space and those kind of ideas. So it has become a part of our project and we're continuing to share our knowledge and our teachings, especially with the advent of the Feast Centre, which was just recently funded, as well as the Winisca Centre in Saskatchewan as well. And right now, you know, we expect that there will be more HIV. In the future, there will be more syphilis, you know, there will, just because in terms of the access to testing sites, you know, for vulnerable populations is very difficult to transfer. You know, especially in inner-city centres where most places are locked down and there really are no open doors to access. So, so we, you know, we really don't know what's going on in the ground with regard to harm reduction or injection drug use or sexual behaviours. But, you know, you know, next year, we might be able to see the true impact of sort of pandemic as we see it and the impacts of COVID on HIV and other STIs.
Awesome. It's so nice to hear about everybody's stories and work and where they're coming from. I'm situated in Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario. It's the Ramsden-Huron Treaty Territory area. I'm from Greater First Nation and I am a lawyer, Indigenous lawyer, who practices in the area of mental health law, criminal law and administrative law, so basically challenging governments on lots of things. I interact with communities and advocacy, engaging with criminalised communities or stigmatized communities such as the people gathered here today. So I come from a particular lived experience in being criminalised myself. So that's my situation and where I come from. But I recognise that being a lawyer, I, while I am privileged, I am not privileged in all the sense. I still experience discrimination because of my race and gender and how I present in the courthouse. So I try to use what I have for good and I represent frequently individuals who are charged and who have what I call concurrent issues, so mental health, criminal issues that intersect, that may like drug use and such. So that's where I come from and I'm excited here to speak.
Thanks, Naomi. I'm going to ask the second round of questions. So the first, so again, we'll go with Gillian to begin. Can you talk to us a little bit about what can the multiple pandemics teach us about how HIV research needs to shift, change and adapt?
Thanks. So I think I'm going to call attention to some research that I've been doing in the last little while on access to harm reduction services among people who use drugs in Toronto during the pandemic. And people have told us a lot about how they were able to keep up and maintain access to harm reduction services. So they were able to still access supervised consumption sites. They were able to access harm reduction equipment. Again, we're in Toronto where we have a lot of programs in a small concentrated space. So this is a very different situation than a lot of other places in Canada. But one of the things that was most striking in doing these interviews of people was that people were telling us in the early days of the pandemic about how they'd lost 25 pounds because they weren't able to get enough food to eat. And people were talking about how all of the drop-in programs that they relied on for access to food, for social opportunities, to see people, for social supports in their community, all of that had closed down. And what a lack that was in their lives. I think that one of the issues that we really, really have to think about going forwards, as we think about what the multiple pandemics can teach us about research, is the importance of social determinants of health and how our long neglect of the social determinants of health, particularly affordable housing and adequate income supports, have really been driving a lot of the issues that we're seeing during the pandemic. I think that we've had decades of underinvestment in affordable housing, ridiculously low rates of income support programs across Canada, a lack of investment in new social housing options. And this kind of came to the fore during COVID because we saw a lot of visible manifestations of homelessness, like encampments and parks pop up across Canada. And I think the thing that was most striking to me, especially as I spoke to a lot of people in the encampments, was how there was so little urgency from any level of government to try to do anything about the 10,000 homeless people in the city of Toronto alone, other than to try to move people into substandard sheltering options so that they were once again out of sight and out of mind. And so I think we really think, need to think about an intersectional approach here. And I think that one of the important lessons is, is that risk isn't being evenly distributed among all of our community members. You can see this in Toronto where people living in poverty and racialised people are disproportionately impacted by COVID with vastly higher infection rates. And I think this is partly due to the social determinants of health, but also we need a really renewed focus in our research on the ways in which social policies and laws, as well as institutional policies and regulations, are structuring the experience of risk differently for people. And so I think if we're going to step back from this question a bit, the first lesson is that HIV research can't happen in a silo. We need to broadly conceptualise what, I do research with people who use drugs. So I think that rather than thinking about risk or individual level risk factors, I'm thinking a lot about ways that we can broadly conceptualise research that advances the health of people who use drugs. I'm also really thinking a lot these days about how to move evidence into action. And this is not kind of like a question about KTE or implementation science. I think that evidence in the last couple of weeks, if we think about COVID in Ontario and Alberta in particular, is that our governments are very unwilling to be, to be moved by our best available evidence and then will act totally shocked when predictable impacts of ignoring this evidence come to pass, particularly among some of our most marginalised community members. And if we bring this back to drug policy, I think the example of supervised consumption sites is instructive here. We have over 30 years of evidence on the effectiveness and positive impacts from supervised consumption sites. Yet in the past few years, we've seen Ontario cut multiple overdose prevention sites. I mentioned Alberta now has pulled funding and forced the closure of two supervised consumption sites in that province. Saskatchewan is refusing still to fund supervised consumption sites run by Prairie Harm Reduction. And all of this is amidst a worsening crisis of overdose deaths. And so I think we need to actually think about the moral questions involved here. It's really about how we can get evidence-based policy responses implemented when it's clear that some of our governments just simply don't care if people live or die. And frankly, that's a really difficult place to be in right now when we think about how our research needs to shift and adapt.
Thanks, Gillian. Albert, so same question to you around what can multiple pandemics teach us?
Well, I think what I've noticed lately is sort of the lack or political will to follow up with ethnic identifiers and HIV recording. And, you know, that sort of came in from the federal level and in some provincial, you know, sectors that they do use ethnic identifiers and especially important for Indigenous people because we've always been overrepresented. As Gillian talked about, those lack of addressing the social determinants of health. And in Manitoba, we've gone from like 40 to 60% of new infections annually. And in Saskatchewan, it's even higher, up to 70 or higher than 70% of new infections. And over the last few years, I've just seen this erosion of applying those ethnic identifiers and annual HIV reports, even though the data is collected, you know, at the point of testing, that, you know, it is, you know, it's a time, you know, it's sort of, you know, that, you know, they're not being reported anymore, even though, because they're not accurate enough, you know, to scientifically report. But again, why collect them in the beginning, right? If that's a science, right? And if you look at the COVID pandemic in Manitoba, there's a special agreement between the province and the COVID testing in, in sort of documenting the First Nations people, right? So they, they have a particular, you know, weekly report that shows, you know, the age, you know, all of that in terms of which First Nations, you know, where the HIV is, the COVID is, right? So there's sort of two different sciences at play here, where, you know, with HIV slowly, you know, ethnic identifiers are falling off the, you know, page. And then in COVID, the special agreement with the province in terms of First Nations being able to use that data to monitor and address the COVID pandemic, right? So, so how do those meet? And how did, and is that a model that we can use going forward, right? This, this data sharing agreement, it was a special data sharing agreement with the Manitoba Government.
Thank you. Naomi, what can multiple pandemics teach us about HIV research?
Um, so I think we have to look at like Indigenous communities and how they practise community care to begin with. Because they have been quick to respond to, you know, shut down their borders. You know, I think that was that, you know, exercise in sovereignty was very valuable to, to their, basically their survival, to say the least. And then how they administer the vaccines just as quickly and able to ensure that their elders, their young ones were supported, especially for online schooling and making sure that each student had available technology. And then, you know, responding to that, I think that the government, the government, the provincial and federal governments can, can really learn from that. And also scholarly, so like scholarly research can learn from Indigenous care networks. Oftentimes scholars and academics who are doing research thinks, you know, think things have to be big and sexy and complex in order to be useful. But actually, no, it's just as simple as having distribution of pamphlets to community members or, you know, placing a radio ad or making available a 24-hour phone line and making sure that somebody's available at that phone line to answer questions. Yeah, that requires capital, like, you know, you need somebody to answer the phone 24/7. But it's very minimal, like the threshold to build those support networks is very minimal. And I think that research, HIV research, can learn a lot from Indigenous knowledges and practices.
Thank you to all of you for your wonderful comments. Onto our next question. In your work, how have you overcome some of the challenges in engaging with communities throughout this pandemic? That's a big one. Off to you, Gillian.
To be honest, I don't know if I have. And I don't know if I've done it well. Um, so I do, I try very hard to do community-based research in partnership with communities most affected, in partnership with people who are working on the front lines of the overdose crisis. And during the COVID pandemic, most days I felt like I'm an imposition and that the research that we're trying to do is a bit of an imposition. Because people are literally involved in a life and death struggle trying to bring basic services to people. And there's two things that I was reflecting on when I was thinking about this question. The first is that even prior to COVID, when it comes to people on the front lines of the overdose crisis response, people were already at a level of burnout that I have never before seen due to the grief and loss of trying to support communities from the unending, it feels like, overdose deaths and from the neglect of governments. And so already when the pandemic hit, people were already in a really difficult spot. And these are the people who've stepped up to be doing, you know, COVID testing in encampments. These are people who've been redeployed from their HIV, Hep C and harm reduction work to be doing vaccine clinics in shelters and in encampments. So I kind of feel like I don't want to ask them anything right now because they're already so overwhelmed. We're lists, we're working in environments of scarcity and austerity. And so I've really started to ask myself questions about whether the research that I'm doing needs to be done now because people just have too much on their plates. And I think that part of this is also because harm reduction workers have stepped up so immensely during the pandemic. They have, they were coming to work doing aerosol generating procedures before they had PPE available. They've been trying to figure out how to keep themselves and their communities safe. And so it's been a difficult process trying to figure out right now how to do this. Just highlighting something that Albert brought up. A lot of the communities that I work with are folks who don't have access to technology. And so I think that we've pivoted to doing research using Zoom, using telephones where we can. But I'm very much worried about how this might be biasing our research samples towards people who have access to technology. And so we're going to leave out and not be hearing the voices of people who don't have that access and that that's going to be a perspective that's getting missed right now. And so that's one thing I wanted to call attention to. But the other thing is, I had a chance to do a little bit of interviewing in early April before the most recent lockdown happened in Ontario. And people were so excited to talk to me. And I don't, I try to make it a nice experience when I'm interviewing people on a research project. I don't pretend that this is what people, you know, want to be spending their afternoons doing. But people really clearly wanted to talk and wanted to talk about their experiences. And people were really missing social connections. And so I think that really there's this element of how communities have been so isolated and left to fend for themselves when their communities were the one thing that was actually keeping them going and keeping them safe. That I think that we really can't miss as we think about the impacts of the COVID pandemic.
Is it Albert?
Thank you, Gillian. Onto you, Albert.
Yes. Yeah. In terms of engagement, I kind of described the situation with doing our northern research project around HIV. But we also work with the project here around addressing racism and discrimination with services around STBBI testing, making spaces culturally safer. And so our advisory team has continued to engage throughout the pandemic, you know, since last March. So we've had annual sharing circle, not annual, weekly sharing circles for the last 50 weeks where we get together and just talk about things. So we've engaged every week for the last, and it's created a sense of community, a sense of family. And also, I think, working with the Sisters of Fire, who are a part of our project. There are 12 First Nations women who are HIV-positive and they're advocates and activists around HIV. That, you know, they, we're kind of learning to work as a team more so, right? So it is outside the box. We've kind of broken down those academic barriers around project management and sort of the separation that occurs. And so we really now, and I think I'm more of a sort of And so we, we really now, and I think I'm more of a sort of familial family type environment where we support each other. So we provided that sort of mental emotional support through this weekly sharing circle using Zoom. And, and I've also, you know, worked through the national action planning process and the burning and missing inquiry through weekly meetings for the last 30, 36 weeks. So, so again, this part about continuing, using whatever you can to keep engaged. And some of our Sisters of Fire are actually community research assistants now, right? So we've been able to engage them in the research as, as peers or research assistants and doing this particular project. Now I just want to go back a bit to this idea about, you know, the federal response to the pandemic, what to distribute millions of dollars for community-based services, right? Like whether it's food, travel, those kinds of things, PPE. So I devised the sort of framework that identified COVID-19, you know, personal protection equipment. And alongside it, I put the harm reduction, personal protection equipment equivalent. And I'm thinking over the last year, you know, if we had put condoms in some of these food hampers or syringes, or, you know, that the numbers might look different next year in terms of the rates of infection. But because of our conservative attitudes, we were, we separated out, right? COVID from HIV and other STIs, and they did not intersect. Especially with this investment of millions of dollars to community-based organizations who could have been delivering a harm reduction PPE along with the other, you know, COVID PPE, right? Because there was a lot of outreach that people were delivering hampers month after month after month, right? And that was a potential engagement that I think we missed in this pandemic. Now I just want to talk about a phenomenon that occurred through Facebook. And it was called the Social Distance Powerwall, and it began last March. Because there was no face-to-face power was happening in North America, they created this online platform and today the membership is over 200,000 people. You know, it is probably the first time in indigenous history that that many indigenous people ever gathered in one place at one time, right? They were providing those things, you know, a sense of community, cultural knowledge, right? And as the pandemic broke in some communities, we saw that, you know, in that whole year, you could see, you know, the pre the outbreak, the outbreak era, and now the vaccination area, and people would drum, they would sing and dance, right? And that's part of our healing, right? That's a part of our, our cultural response to pandemics and illness, right? So we were doing it in real time using the Facebook platform. So to me, it is a phenomenon that occurred as a result of this pandemic.
Thank you so much, Albert. Naomi?
Yeah, so I'm watching my Twitter at the same time. So shout out to the folks tweeting and tugging. So some of the challenges in engaging, actually, the pandemic, I don't think I would have my law practice if the pandemic didn't happen. So I live in a region where, like courts, there's circuit courts, so courts don't sit every single day. There's like one courthouse that serves different regions. And then there are court, little courts in other regions, like I said, just don't sit every day. And without the pandemic, I would have to drive to those courts, so sometimes two hours away, just to appear for one matter. Now we can call in, we can speak to the matter, which is a huge, huge benefit to a lawyer. Like I don't want to have to invest in a car in order to serve my clients, right? Because then my fees will have to go up so that I can pay off my car and that's not access to justice. So the, the courts have recognized the access point at the outset, you know, they shut down, they said, okay, let's do it over the phone, like let's do as much as we can over teleconferencing, which already happened, it was just now, I, I appeared in court today in the morning and I stayed in my home. Obviously, some things will, will require in-person attendance and, and that's okay, right? Little minor things are now being accommodated where they used to say before to clients, figure it out and get to court, right? And now they're, now they're like, okay, here are the details, you can call in. And that is so dignifying just from an access to justice point, right? You know, you're expected to go to court. And if, if there are issues with you getting in court, you, you now can just call in. So I think there's lots to be learned from, from the courts, but with that same breadth. Online stuff isn't for everybody. It, it can be very tiring and it could be very frustrating. And there's a huge access to high-speed internet issue, which causes a lot of stress for a lot of families, especially now that families are being strained with their, if they have children in the home and they've had to work in the home. And so there's now this heightened tension with all of us 24/7. So we just need to be mindful of that as well. So for me, it's been, it's been really helpful because I just have a personal preference to not meet with persons in person, right? If I can do it over the phone, I'd rather do it. And, you know, if, if, if a client comes to me and they say they really want to meet with me in person, I, I tell them like, look, here's another lawyer who could probably take you on. But this, this is my practice and I work out of my home, so not all my, I don't want to invite all my clients to my home. It's just, I, I need some sense of privacy in my, in my life. So I think the courts have been, and I think scholars should actually be assessing how courts are operating now and the effects of that long-term, especially for criminalized communities. Drug users, sex workers, LGBT folks. There's a probably a wealth of research that could build up from that.
Thanks so much, Naomi. So I have the final question that's like scheduled for the panel, which is what would be required for us to move to action to address the multiple compounding issues over the next year? And I think we kind of thought of this question as a way for you to kind of have an opportunity to kind of speak to researchers in terms of what can we do as researchers to, to make things better? Gillian, sorry.
Just pausing. I'm not going to pretend to have any answers on this because I, I think that this is a really, really crucial question. And I think that this is one of the places where we really need to be centering the voices of people who are being most impacted. When we think about the situation of people who use drugs, they've been telling us for years that we need decriminalization, that they need access to safer regulated drugs, both opioids and stimulants. And this has been so slow. So coming back to the point I was making earlier about overdose deaths being drug and social policy deaths. I think despite the issues with the COVID response, and there have been many, many issues, I don't want to downplay that. We have daily updates, we have COVID response tables at all levels of government. We've seen what a system-wide response to a public health crisis can look like. And being involved in the response to the overdose crisis over the last five years, it's frankly been mind-blowing to see how much that can all come together when we choose to make it come together. So I think we need to call attention to the lack of a coordinated response. We need to stop pretending that opening the occasional supervised consumption site here and the occasional overdose prevention site there, or that funding a handful of safer supply programs, while also maintaining a billion-dollar system of drug prohibition and criminalization. We have to stop pretending that it's going to work. We need broad systematic change and there is no, it doesn't seem to be coming. I'll give you one example. We have overdose reports now from Ontario or coroner's reports on overdose deaths from Ontario and BC that have been highlighting for a while now that an increasing proportion of overdose deaths across the country are from drug inhalation or smoking and not from injecting. Yet we see no urgency whatsoever towards moving to open supervised smoking services, which are good for monitoring, but they're also very, very good for bringing people who smoke or inhale their drugs into the healthcare and the social service system. And so it's not that we don't know what the problems are or what interventions would be helpful. We're currently being impeded by regulations and bureaucratic structures that are impeding the response actively. We also really need to move past tokenistic representation. So again, people who use drugs have been telling us for years that they need to be centered in discussions, in policy decisions, in task forces on decriminalization. And we're not seeing that still today. When it comes to decriminalization in particular, we're once again seeing the voices of police and credentialed experts centered rather than those with lived experience of drug-related criminalization. And so we really actually have to focus, those of us who are in those rooms, on ensuring that there is actual proper representation there and stop playing along when it's not. Yeah, I think the last thing I would say is, is that there's a lot of communities of care out there. There's a lot of ways that people have been coming together within communities to support each other and to care for each other. And I think that we could really do with focusing on that rather than risk behaviors or framing people as just a bundle of risks all the time. I think a focus on the ways that communities have been coming together and have really been driving the response at the community level would also be, would also do us a lot of good.
Thanks, Gillian. Albert, what about you? What requires, what's required to move us into action?
Well, I think, you know, there were a couple of projects funded in terms of mapping the indigenous response to the COVID pandemic last March. So that's over a year ago, right? So some of that will be important to really characterizing what the response was that, you know, at the urban level, you know, the rural, the unreserved, the remote, to the northern. And that's going to be really important, right? Because I think for indigenous people, COVID has really hit at the heart of the homeland, right? That it was not, in a few months, it made it into some very remote communities and people had to react, respond, even though many were ready, it still reached there. So I think, you know, relying on some of those early projects that began to characterize from the very outset of the First Nations response and marrying that, I think, with the indigenous response to HIV. And that response has evolved over 40 years, right, since 1980. So that's not something new, but whether governments or systems have actually acknowledged that or included any of those indigenous responses that have been, you know, recommendations that have been put forward for regeneration now. Some of the bureaucrats we advised were not even born at the time of the HIV, beginning of the pandemic. And that's where, like, I think Naomi mentioned that, you know, there are gatekeepers who, who really don't know what we're dealing with, right? Who are making policy decisions, funding decisions, and they really don't know what this, the pandemics were about. And I think, and again, as I think Naomi mentioned, you know, we saw with COVID, there are resources there, right? Canada is a wealthy country, so why are we having such a conservative response to, to drug use or safe consumption sites, you know? When you saw, you know, the billions of dollars that have been released, you know, in the last year, right? So, so it's kind of this conversation about the ethical ethics behind the work that we're doing and what research plays in, in these determining, you know, what gets funded and what doesn't get funded, right? And, you know, we know with the inquiry, particularly to indigenous women and to spread people, you know, it's, it's characterized as genocide. And this is an example of what we could say is genocide, right? Where you do, you do not give the determinants of health. You do not provide those resources and people die, right? And we're seeing it, right? We've seen it in the last year because of this pandemic.
And I, it makes me think about all the oil and gas that's still going on with the industry today, even though everything else is closed down. So thank you, Albert. Naomi, what is required for us to move into action?
Well, that's a big question. But it ties back to what I said earlier, like, you know, just listen to what indigenous communities have been saying. And, you know, it's, it's not big fancy responses. It's not building new like systems. Systems of care and networks of care are already in place in our communities that are criminalized because we do utilize those networks to stay safe and to stay connected. And I think there is real value in that. But in terms of like generally, more broadly, I think that there probably could be some real benefit to engaging in advocacy that relates to not just public health, but also technology. And I'm a big advocate for using technology to help connect with one young, young people and then also criminalized folks because it meets them where they're at. We, we make assumptions about technology. But I remember I was working on one research project in law school and one assumption was that most folks on the street don't have cell phones, but that was actually the opposite. And they would connect with services via free Wi-Fi. So just imagine how liberating and dignifying it could be. You know, people are getting rid of their cell phones left and right all the time, like every couple of years. Just imagine how dignifying that could be if we could utilize those or reuse cell phones and then advocate for free Wi-Fi. Not cheap Wi-Fi, but like good Wi-Fi where you can send stuff, download stuff. Because that would, I think, be very liberating for our communities.
Thanks so much. Brittany, I think you're gonna give us some reflections.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much to our panelists for sharing so many thought-provoking points with us today. You know, some things that stood out to me were that, you know, the intersection of these pandemics has really just served to further amplify inequities that were already there. The overdose crisis is something that is first and foremost a huge issue that we need to be considering right now. You know, I love what Naomi said about, you know, focusing and drawing upon the sovereignty of communities are traditional community ways and how we can frame that as an asset for our responses going forward and look to some of those approaches to guide us. Gillian, what you had to say about burnout in communities is something that I've been hearing a lot of as well. And I thought that was, you know, really important point to bring up as researchers, as we engage with communities. You know, people are really focused on survival right now. And, you know, that's giving us a great question to ask ourselves is what research needs to be done right now and what can be done later? And that's the importance, I think, of the communities driving the research questions. You know, in my own work, I've actually been approached by some community members who have, have said that they really just want to see research on how to address burnout among staff and among the people who are working the front lines and providing support in mental health. in mental health and wellness for people as well who are on the front lines of the overdose crisis. So that's something that is super key. I loved what Albert had to say about, you know, incorporating harm reduction and other supports within, you know, basic packages or things that we're offering in community, like food baskets or hampers, and how that's a great opportunity to incorporate those things into those approaches. And what Gillian said about moving past tokenistic representation, that's super key. I think that, you know, the voices of lived experience, the voices of community are centered in this work, especially within the current context that we're in right now. One final take-home was that what Naomi mentioned around the legal barriers and access to justice. And the fact that that could be seen as a positive. We've learned through this pandemic to do things differently, to do things virtually. Even a gathering such as today, we're able to gather from near and far and share knowledge. And the pandemic has really shown us how we have the ability and the power to actually come together and respond to very complex problems when everyone coordinates and puts their mind to it. So I think that could be seen as something helpful, that we can draw upon the collectiveness of this work together to address some of these intersections and these priority issues. Pass back to you, Eli.
Thanks, Brittany, for your reflections. I want to just draw in some of the comments that are happening in the chat and in the questions. So one of the most kind of commented or liked comments in the chat says, "Most of us are literally so stressed that research is high-level and not impactful, with zero support, no one wants to engage. With minimal pay and zero support, researchers do not seem to realize this, and now everyone is burned out." One of the questions in the chat that I'll put to the panelists is, "Would you be willing to share that research account? The connectedness you talked about is more important than anything system research can, can bring."
So, I, okay. I think there's a danger in saying research can wait, because there is a lot of things happening in the court system right now that are not being captured, right? So research can also be empowering, because it connects people to potential. I am aware how some researchers, you know, say, okay, you participate in this research project, you know, we'll connect you with some resources afterwards. There can be some connectedness associated with the research itself. And gaps can be filled, hopefully, sooner rather than later. So that's just my perspective, just because I'm seeing huge gaps and huge issues in the courthouses right now. You know, that are doing their best, but at the same time, research can bring light to some of that, those issues.
Yeah, and I think it also raises the question around what kind of research do we do, right? Like, I think as qualitative researchers, we often think interviews is the way to go. But I think there's diverse ways that we can engage people that aren't necessarily, interviews aren't necessarily always taxing, right? Like, what information is already out there in the public domain that allows us to gather information around what's going on right now? So we're not burdening people or overburdening people. One of the other questions, sorry, Gillian, did you want to respond?
No, I just wanted to echo what Naomi was saying, because I think it's a very important point. I think that now, more than ever, right now, is when we need to be going to communities and ensuring that our research is responsive to the needs that community themselves are identifying, rather than sitting at home and figuring out what research questions we think are most fundable. I think that that's really the key, is we really, really need to ensure that the oversights and that the issues, and especially the way in which some of the decisions we've made during COVID have impacted on our most marginalized community members, that that doesn't get overlooked in all of this.
Thanks. Albert, did you want to respond?
Well, I think, one of, you know, one of the things, you know, as a survivor of the first wave of the HIV pandemic in Canada, this is regard to stress and burnout. And that was when people were dying of AIDS. And over time, you know, people began to share that about your heart and your feelings, right? And this is something that people had said back in those days, you know, your, your heart breaks so many times, it finally breaks open, right? And then you begin to feel, right? And so it helps us position ourselves where we are in this pandemic. It's only been the first year. And somebody went through that AIDS epidemic for ten years, where they lost people. So, so that's, that's, for me, a legacy from that era, you know, is, is how much we can actually endure as humans. And this is a human virus, right? Similar with HIV, you know, it had different origins, but today it's human. And in those days, it was, you know, body fluids or sharing drug equipment. Today, it's your breath, right? So it is very human, and we need to consider that in how we respond, that this is a human issue. It's a human, and it involves feelings and emotions and pain, right? And so, so I haven't forgotten that, that perspective about our hearts. Our hearts do, will break, right?
Thank you for that, Albert. I think it's really key to kind of remember the lessons we learn from HIV around multiple loss and grief and what that has taught us. I think, just to kind of close off our session a little bit, I think one of the things that, that really stood out for me around this panel was about community care and the different ways that people are caring for each other, whether that be using technology in unique ways or, or using ancestral ways of knowing and longstanding community networks to, to support each other and to support communities. I think, you know, one of the things that Holly, today, from the Native Women's Association in Canada, talked about in the Social Science Track, was how Indigenous women didn't really, weren't really benefited at all in terms of the release from prisons, because most of the people who were released during COVID were from, who were deemed low-risk, and Indigenous women weren't really seen as, as high, are mostly seen as high-risk or moderate-risk. And so I think, you know, one of the things that we really wanted to highlight in this panel, and I think you've all done excellent jobs around kind of bringing these issues together around how these compounding issues have really escalated in COVID and the things that we can learn, not only from COVID, but HIV as well. So I want to thank all of our panelists and my co-moderator, Brittany, for being here today. Thank you, Albert, thank you, Gillian, thank you, Naomi, and thank you all for joining us today. I hope you enjoy the rest of the conference.